Okay, it's six o'clock, so we're going to get started. Um, just a few opening remarks. Thank you all for being here, the folks that are in person and also the folks that own them there. Um, just a disclaimer, Ms. Jackson had some eye surgery or some eye, her eyes dilated surgery today, so uh, if she's not focusing, uh, just be a little pa- patient.
Thank you.
Um, so again, thank you all for being here. Um, and we're here to, to learn more about what our plan is to reopen schools in August. So first I want to say thanks to the task force. Uh, most of the members I think are here. Um, we know that it took a lot of effort to get to this point. And this is the first time anyone has really seen this presentation. Um, we know that you work with health officials, uh, the faith community, uh, parents, and uh, looked at surveys from teachers and um, staff members and administration. So we appreciate the efforts to get us to this point. Um, I know there's a lot of anxiety out there. Um, uh, I think a lot of the board members have heard from the members of the public. Um, and hopefully this will ease some of that anxiety. But um, I don't think we're really behind. I know there's other areas of the state and the local area that have announced their um, plans. So uh, you know, just have some patience here because this is an evolving situation. And it's really going to continue to change all the way up until August seventeenth. You know, that, that's when we're slated to start school now. So it may change on August sixteenth. Um, and I, I think that's one of the reasons that South Carolina is um, requiring the, the plans to be in place only twenty days in advance because they know that it could be a fluid situation up to that point. And if people make plans based on something two months old, then you know, those plans may change. Also, just to have some patience tonight too. This is a draft. Um, and the folks have been working really hard uh, to get us to this point. So we're here really to ask questions as a board and provide some comments. Uh, if members of the public have comments, uh, please reach out to your respective board member or Mr. Lawrence via email. Um, the, the nature of these public or these uh, works, study sessions don't uh, typically have public input in person. So we're going to take any email type comments once the plan is presented. So I, I encourage people to do that. Um, we will, on the meeting on July fourteenth, have a limited in-person public comment period. And it's really just limited by the capacity of the room that we're in. So uh, um, if you so, are so compelled to come on the fourteenth, try to get early so you can uh, be, make your comments in person. Um, and I caution everyone too to, to not make any plans based on the draft that we're going to see tonight. You know, don't make any deposits on childcare or vacation or something like that. Uh, because it's just a draft. It's an evolved, like I said, up until the point that uh, it's approved. And after it's approved, there's going to be probably off ramps where things will change along the way. With that, um, I think that's all the notes that I had that I made myself. Uh, Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Um, I want to draw your attention to the slide that's up there now because I just, I just can't say enough about, and, and, and that caption is perfect, "One heroic team." I like putting that heroic in there because our team has done an incredible job. Uh, the circumstances were anything but ideal back in March when it felt like for many of us that the rug was pulled out from under us. But uh, people pulled together, worked very hard. We had volunteers involved as well. But we served nearly a million meals uh, to students. We um, provided almost seventy-five thousand distance learning packets that, that we had available to them. Um, we had twenty-five thousand virtual conferences with students that our teachers did via Zoom and, and, and other, other media. Um, we had sixty-one car parades, which was a lot of fun uh, to see. If you, if you didn't get to see a car parade, you really missed something. And I'm not sure if we're exaggerating, I hope we're not, but one and a half million air hugs went out during that last semester of school. So, so it was an exciting time. We appreciate all of the efforts um, that our folks have put in. School food service, bus drivers, parent professionals, teachers, administrators, other support staff. You name it, our, our folks got in there, rolled up their sleeves and got the job done. Uh, we were very pleased to have support from, from our churches, pleased to have support from uh, Golden Harvest and so many other volunteers that jumped in, the uh, Aiken County Realtors Association. There were so many people that volunteered to work with us to make sure that not only uh, we made sure that our students were fed, but that we also uh, to the extent possible, kept learning happening in Aiken County. So my thanks just go out to those folks. But we didn't stop there. Even while that was going on, we were planning for what happens in August and how we get back to school. And uh, our back-to-school task force, um, led by Dr. Phyllis Campbell, and you're going to hear from her in just a few minutes, did an incredible job. And a lot of the um, the emails that came in, the questions, I always enjoyed reading the questions from the public. Some of the questions that board members sent to me, some of the questions that came directly to me uh, from parents and other members of the public. And I would, I would kind of check them off. And I would say, yep, the uh, task force has, has talked about this one. Yep, they talked about this one. Yep, they talked about this one. Occasionally I'd come across one that nobody had seen before. So, you know, we pass that on to them so that they can consider those. Even today, I got some things that we weren't sure that the task force had considered. And we'll, and, and the board will continue to consider those things and the task force will continue to consider them. Some things that are real important, we started, and you'll hear more about this when Dr. Campbell uh, speaks in just a minute. Some things that were very important to us included um, health and safety. And, and, and looking at what the CDC recommends, looking at what DHEC recommends, looking at what the accelerated ed task force for the state recommends and, and, and other recommendations from the State Department of Education. And making sure that we're, we're following science, following the guidelines. And, and every decision that's made, every recommendation that's made, everything that went into our proposal and everything that was left out of our proposal was based on, on the uh, on, on the recommendations of not only state groups but local groups. We've talked to parents. We'll see how many parents we surveyed. We'll see how many teachers we surveyed. We've talked to, in person with um, local health professionals. We've talked in person with local faith-based leaders. We, we've had these conversations and we, we've tried to uh, work our way through uh, the different scenarios and the different possibilities. And we really wanted to present a plan to the board, a draft plan to the board that pretty much covers any eventuality. Pretty much covers anything that might come our way in August and, and even before August. Um, you're going to see phases in this plan. Now, when you see the word phase and, and phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, I'm going to ask that you not think of those things in a linear fashion. We, we use the word phase for, for convenience more than anything else. There are very restrictive phases where we feel like the, the dangers outweigh the benefits of students being back in school. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's going to happen on August seventeenth. So I want you to, to keep that in mind. We have um, very non-restricted phases. In fact, the most non-restricted phase would be going back to school as normal. So um, we, we want to look at all of those things and, and, and give you a look at, at what it would look like on August seventeenth. Whichever of those um, phases we end up recommending and whichever ones you end up approving for us to move forward with or, or a combination of those. Uh, but I just want to, to make that clear right away. And I've, I've asked Phyllis to say that several times to make sure that um, that, that we don't lose sight of the fact that we're not recommending a step-by-step phased-in approach. We're using the concept of phases to help with understanding the more restrictive and the less restrictive returns to, to school in August. So with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Campbell to uh, share with you the work of her team.
Chairman, Minister Lawrence, members of the board. Um, I have the honor to be selected to represent the task force for back-to-school. And I only hope that I could do their work justice. So I'd like to start off with um, a post that someone shared. And I'd like to give you a minute to read that post. I think this post speaks to our work and the foundation of our work, that no matter what you hear, somebody's going to be angry. No matter what we decide, somebody's going to be angry. So I, I wanted you to keep that in mind. And what really struck me was the bottom part where it said, pray for them because I am one of them. Show them grace, I'm one of those. Have empathy and stay positive because together we're going to get through this. So I just want to take you through the plans um, of our um, task force. And as Mr. Lawrence said, it's, it's a draft. So our task force consisted of thirty-nine members of uh, different personnel within Aiken County School District. Teachers, admin, department heads, district office staff. And there were several subcommittees, but the subcommittees didn't stay in their little compartments. They reached out to other subcommittees. So we had teachers, maybe they were in the um, SEL or social emotional learning. They went over to the teaching and learning. And we checked back and forth with each other. We went to operations, does this make sense? So we save subcommittees, we didn't stay in our little subcommittees. We reached out across our subcommittees to make sure what we were thinking was matching up. We looked at the accelerated ed draft and the final recommendations. And we were led by a lot of what they suggested or their recommendations. We also had an input meeting with our local medical personnel. Because we've had many, we've heard many things from people outside of the state, people inside the state. We wanted to hear from Aiken and North of Dust and also around the communities, what is happening in Aiken? Because ultimately, we're making the decision for Aiken County School District, not for the state of South Carolina. We also had the superintendent's parents advisory group, which came in. May not as many as we would have hoped, but they gave us some very good input. So our guiding principles, our number one guiding principle was our staff and students, their safety, their health, emotional and physical health. We also wanted to continue teaching and learning. When we left in March, we kind of had a stop, review, but we wanted to have new learning to occur during this phase. Equity and access is always in a county this size, that's always on the top of our minds. How do we provide access to communities that don't have internet access? We want to communicate with all of our stakeholders, which our Department of Communications has been putting out messages to keep all our stakeholders aware of what's going on. And the flexibility of our operations, I can't even describe how transportation, our food, school food service, all maintenance are willing to jump in and do things differently to ensure that we can bring students and staff back safely. We also followed CDC, DHEC, and the State Department of Education guidelines. So we sent out a survey and we, we sent it to every teacher and staff member and to every parent and guardian. And not only to the parent wants, but for every single kid that you have. We wanted to know your thoughts about your individual kids because that's how we see our students here in Aiken. We see in each individual child. So when we look at this survey, that was staff's and um, teachers and staff's responses, but the parents and guardians may not, those are individual students. There may not be that many parents and guardians because one parent may have four kids or two kids. But those were for individual students. And we got feedback in June and this July, we had two thousand more from parents and guardians and a hundred more from our staff, teachers and staff. So what did we want to know? We wanted to know, did I just get one?
I did.
Oh, maybe not. Okay, so we wanted to know, did parents want to come back? What format or what setting did you expect to return to in August, on August seventeenth? So fifty percent or close to fifty percent of parents and teachers wanted to return to a face-to-face with the caveat that health and safety rules are in place. So one of those, in my opinion, is social distancing. Can we provide social distancing and other health and safety measures when we return face-to-face? We also had um, nineteen percent full-time virtual learning opportunities when school returns. So we looked at the um, the responses by level. So elementary, PK through um, fifth grade and then middle and high. And what we see in highs, there is twenty, twenty-five percent? Or wait a minute, twenty-four percent that are looking at full-time virtual in the high school. Most of the middle and uh, elementary are looking at some face-to-face with appropriate health and safety measures. So teachers and parents agree that health, disinfectant, hygiene were the number one things that we wanted to see when we returned to school. And then class size to maintain physical, physical distancing. Those go hand in hand because physical distancing is one of those measures that will help with health. So our medical personnel input, one recommendation that they all agreed on was that masks for both teachers and students. And they recognized that some students would not be able to wear a mask for whatever reason there may be. They also recommended temperature checks at multiple times during the school day, not only at the beginning, but in somewhere in the middle also. They discussed the exposure to the virus versus the risk of not having students in school. They all with health measures in place, recommended that students have some kind of face-to-face. Our parent input, there was concern about siblings. If we had to send kids to school on different days, would all of the siblings in the same household go to school on those same days? There are of course childcare issues, not only for parents, but also for Aiken County employees who are, many are teachers and other staff members who would have to work. And options for parents who didn't feel comfortable sending their kids back in August. There was also a concern for more content in ELA and MATS, especially in um, elementary school. And then tips for parents, if they should have to have at-home learning, could we provide tips to help facilitate that so they can help their children more than they could in March? And then video lessons for students who may miss school for whatever reason, that they can review the content at home. So our areas consideration became our subcommittees. Um, so you can see them all here. And we have representation from all of those subcommittees, just in case you guys have hard questions that I can't answer. So this was our health and safety subcommittee. Just want to remind you that the subcommittees went across into other committees. So they just didn't stay in their one place where they were assigned. So in health and safety, a lot of things that the medical profession emphasized, we, we looked at also. Temperature screening, how we do them, protocols for washing, sanitizing your hands on a regular and frequent basis. How do we social distance it in all of our educational settings? Um, of course cleaning our buildings, which we started in March with different cleaning processes. Um, notification and contact tracing was important. And um, we know we still have to remain safe from intruder drills and those kind of things. So what does that revision look like in a, in an environment where you have to social distance? And then of course, protocols for anyone who may have symptoms of COVID. And then what would the personal protection equipment be for our staff and students? So our social emotional supports committee, we recognize that we've all been out for quite some time and we've had different levels of support and different levels of stress as we've been out. Not only for our students, but for our staff also. So we want to provide some supports as soon as we return, as soon as we're able to get together. So we have some things already in place, um, some tiered systems of support for our staff and some self-care resources. We also asked on our survey, a survey that we sent out, do people feel like they have a support person? Is there someone you could go to if you're feeling stressed or you're feeling overwhelmed? We'll have some re-entry icebreakers for the staff and students and a systematic approach for student and family referrals. So that students can refer themselves or staff can refer themselves or somebody else can refer a friend who they notice is having a hard time. And also we've always maintained a district crisis and grief response team. And we'll just include COVID-nineteen as a part of that. So our communications and community engagement, uh, Mary is going to talk about that.
Thank you, Phyllis. We promised a smooth transition, so I'll be as quick as I can in getting a mask off my correct. Thank you. Uh, so just like the other subcommittees, we had a representative subcommittee of um, teachers from every level. I can't tell you enough about these teachers and the guidance that they brought to our communications. Um, as well as a high school perspective from Dr. Jason Holt. Kate Olin, our Director of Accountability and Assessment, also served on this committee and was a huge support um, to our subcommittee in talking about surveying parents and really making sure that that data matched to individual students. Um, and of course myself, I'm, I'm very fortunate to be the Director of Communications and Community Partnerships and our communications facilitator, Stephanie Bear. We had some immediate priorities. Um, so that's our stakeholder input, branding. So um, wanting to um, project our school district as the school district that everybody knows and trusts and has been a wonderful place to work and to also send their students in this community. Um, when we also had to communicate some things that were not really in the, in the norm, such as wearing face coverings and um, social distancing. Um, also, um, we made a commitment to be transparent and to share what we could. Uh, we knew we had, the committees had a lot of decisions to make. Um, but we made a commitment to share what we could as soon as we could and to be as truthful as possible. An example of that is a couple of weeks ago when Mr. Lawrence made a statement that it was unlikely that we would be returning right away to a traditional schedule on August seventeenth. That's difficult to swallow. Uh, but as soon as we knew that, um, for our community, we felt like that was something that parents needed to start um, wrapping their heads around. Um, and we knew that some of these early versions of the plans for back-to-school were quite complicated. Um, and so our committee made a commitment to making that as simple as possible. Um, and schoolroom members, I'm sure you see um, a phased plan in front of you that um, may still be a little complicated, but I believe that it's um, it's an improvement from where we started. So we look forward to your feedback on that. And as has been mentioned, we did send out a um, parent and guardian survey about their highest priorities for back-to-school, about what their interests were, what their concerns were. Um, we've also met with our local pediatricians, primary health physicians and family doctors, as well as our superintendent's parent advisory council and our faith-based leadership. We met with them this morning, knowing that some of these phases, um, we will be asking um, from our committee for partnership throughout our local community. Um, that may, may mean a request that they um, support our families with some childcare needs that they would have, especially at certain points of these phases. Uh, so you, you will see um, a, a new brand that our school, um, that our subcommittee has developed. We wanted it to encompass Aiken County Public Schools brand that um, everyone in our community knows. Um, we've had our, our new district logo for a few years now, so we certainly wanted that to be incorporated. Um, we are the best place to work in the county and we also are the premier educational um, opportunity for students here. So we want to build on that brand. But we also wanted to focus on what was important to our families, uh, which is safety, health and safety and, and the security of their students. So um, in your phases, you'll see that uh, there are four different phases and these are represented by these little blocks here. And if you look closely, they also make a safety cross. So the white part in the middle um, makes a safety cross. So we'll be using both of these brands, this and then the safety cross by itself is part of our branding. We also needed another brand for um, for the wonderful use of the CARES Act funding that you all have approved. So um, one-to-one computing for all students um, as low as third grade. So third through twelfth grade, some of those phases have a very heavy influence of remote learning. So what that means is they begin, students would begin in a combination of learning in the classroom um, in smaller groups with their teachers, more one-on-one or small groups, but also taking a device um, with them home, watching pre-recorded lessons and doing um, supportive activities along with their teacher's support. Um, and so the committee, um, the one-to-one communications subcommittee came up with this logo. Um, and it, it will be called Love and it's learning virtually everywhere. So what we wanted to project was whether students are at home, whether they're at their grandparents' house um, or at um, a church facility who has opened up their doors to safely care for children on a day where they're learning remotely, that they're learning virtually everywhere. But most importantly, that um, that our teachers' hearts are with them no matter where they are. In addition to the other branding, we've received a number of um, requirements from the CDC and DHEC uh, for things that we needed to post on our doors, as well as things that we just wanted to post. Some reminders about um, proper hand washing and um, and also about not entering our buildings if you had any of the, um, any of the symptoms that were related to COVID. So instead of just posting the CDC guidelines, we wanted that to be in line with our existing branding and really to show that we, um, we're not just posting something somebody else gave to us, but that it was a part of our, a part of our operations and something that we were fully embracing. And we also have committed to regular and transparent communications, not just on our website, but also through um, through emails to our staff members. And also giving our staff members the consideration of receiving the information first. So before something goes out to our community, we're making sure that um, we're taking that initial step of sharing it with um, those who serve and, and work alongside us in the, in the school district. Mr. Lawrence has shared a number of videos throughout our closures. Um, and he has shared a recent video um, about the work of the task force. And I anticipate that we'll have many, many more as we near the first day of school. Um, and of course, our relationships with the local media and sharing the um, the news of our task force and the news of our plans, um, is, is certainly something we appreciate and plan to continue. Um, so those are our initial priorities. Our priorities will continue after um, your hopeful approval of plans um, in the next, next week or so. Uh, but we see the importance in marketing the decisions of, of this board and, and the recommendations of the committee to the community. So um, if things like masks and temperature checks do become part of, of the uh, plans, we see the importance in reiterating that and continuing to share um, the why behind it. Um, some of these plans will, uh, really all of them will um, will have students separated into, into groups or colors so that we're able to easily transition with the virus, should we, um, should we have to um, offer more remote learning versus, um, versus in-class learning. And so we see the importance of personalizing those communications um, to our families. Um, of course, just like we did today, encouraging community engagement, some of those uh, recommendations would um, require great inconvenience for our families. So we want to do our part to make um, our community as aware as possible of those challenges that our families will be facing and hopefully help um, bridge that communication from the community to our parents. Um, of course, we always want to connect to the why. Uh, we want to share, as the um, parent advisory group suggested, um, we thought it was a wonderful suggestion, um, sharing with our parents how they can help their children. Um, parents just like us were found in unusual territory uh, this spring. And so finding um, ways for our, for us to be able to share those resources with parents. for us to be able to share those resources with parents. And as we are implementing these protocols, we need to be able to assure our parents that we're following them. Many parents are putting their trust, well, all parents are putting their trust in us to send their children home safely every day. So we want to be able to demonstrate through videos and photographs that, hey, that temperature check station that we told you we were going to have, this is us doing that and we checked it again at lunch if that's our approved protocol. And so just assuring our community that what we said we were going to do, we're actually doing, will go a long way with easing demands of our parents. And of course, these phases, as we move through them, if we have to transition from one to the other, we'd want to be instrumental in helping to communicate that to parents, again, personalizing that to them and keeping that community feedback loop open. So just because what we approved today, you know, we need to still be receptive to community input always and ready to make changes based on their needs. That's it for me.
So our operations committee was our largest committee who will provide the support for all of our student needs. So this is a list of our operations committee. So transportation, we focused on quite a few things that we decided to list for and it was about the number of students that can actually ride the bus. So we're following the SDEs, State Department of Education, Department of Transportation, with what the expectations will be for social distancing on the bus. We've changed our loading and unloading procedures to minimize students crossing each other and of course seating charts, which we've always had, but become even more important to see who was sitting next to who in the case of contact tracing. And of course sanitation of each bus after every round. So after every drop-off, the bus will be fully sanitized. Maintenance and custodians have started in March as soon as we got out with revised cleaning protocols, frequent and intensive cleaning. We've started to put hand sanitizing machines and hand sanitizing machines, I guess, in every classroom so that they're available for students right there and not have to go somewhere else to get the hand sanitizer. We will not use water fountains because of the way they're made and the way kids have to use them. Masks worn at all times in school buildings, so all of our staff will wear masks, even our maintenance and custodians when they go into other buildings as they would have to. And we started with the directional signs for flow of traffic to minimize kids crossing each other. School food service, we plan to have elementary students eat in their classroom for at least two of the phases, maybe all. In middle and high, because of the way middle and high school students have to go to different classes, teachers teach different grade levels, there will be a principal decision or site-based decision on where kids eat, either in the cafeteria or in classrooms. And initially, there will be limited meal options just for ease of getting kids their food in a timely manner so they can finish eating before the time's up. So parameters, we use the guide out planning. We thought about the number of personnel and this isn't related to social distancing. How can we safely social distance the number of personnel in each school building? We thought about the size of our facilities and classrooms. So all of our buildings, I don't know if there's many with the same exact floor plan. So classrooms may be different sizes in different buildings. So that's something that site-based leaders or principals are working on, figuring out if we had to socially distance each kid six feet radius, how many kids could I fit into this room? So parent choice, we listened to what the survey said, virtual, face-to-face as much as possible. And then of course, the guidelines from Accelerated Ed, CDC, DHEC and input from our stakeholders. So teaching and learning subcommittee, this is who was officially on the committee, but like we said, many principals joined in, teachers from all the other committees joined in to make sure that we were thinking, all thinking on the same page. So we came up with two options out of our task force. One was a hybrid option and with students in 4K to 12 would come to school one to four days a week depending on the phase that we happen to be in. And I'll just remind you what Mr. Lawrence said about the phases. I kind of see them like Legos. They can stack any way that we need them to stack. They're very flexible like Legos. You can stack them whatever colors you need or whatever. We named the phases because it was just easy for us to talk about by calling them phases, but they are not meant to be in order. On the days that students were not in school, they would have some learning tasks from home with the support of teacher-created support materials. And then there was the full-time virtual option, which Aitken County is prepared to offer for students in kindergarten through 12th grade. We would not have a virtual option for K4. Students would receive all their instruction at home and they would be guided by one of our local teachers. So they would still be connected with the school district fully. So prepare for these phases. Sort of what Mary Glenn alluded to is that we divided all students into six cohorts or learning cohorts and we gave them colors just so we can keep track of who's in what cohort. And this allowed for us to ease into one phase or another phase. When you see the phases, it'll make sense how we can just keep the cohorts together and go from one phase to another. Students would remain in their same cohort and this would also allow for contact tracing. And students within the same house across the district would be assigned the same learning cohort or the same color to ensure that they all went to school on the same days. So here's our plan and the phases and I'll remind you because Mr. Lawrence said I needed to several times, these are not meant to be in order. These are sort of like Legos. We could take them and stack them in a different order if we needed to in response to what's going on with the COVID-19. So I'm going to take you backwards in the phases from the least restrictive to the most restrictive. So in phase four, it's normal school operations where we would turn all of this planning back over to the site-based leaders or the principals to plan as they would any school day. And this would happen as long as social distancing was no longer a recommendation by CDC, DHEC or the State Department. In phase three, we would have students in grades 2 through 12 attend four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Thursday. So this is a little less, well, a little more restrictive than phase four, but similar. In the middle of the week, we would have more intensive cleaning even though we're cleaning throughout the week. And then students in grades PK through 1 would attend school five days a week. We felt it necessary to have our early learners to be in school as much as possible because they're learning literacy and numeracy at this time. Phase two gets a little more restrictive where students would attend two consecutive days of the week. So if you notice, and students in grades K4 through 1 would attend three days a week. So example, a student in the red group would attend on Monday and Tuesday, that's for grades 2 through 12. A kindergarten student in the red group would attend on Monday, which is their color day, Tuesday, which is their color day, and then Wednesday when all of our early learners attend. Did that make sense? Okay, so I'm going to say it again. So K through 12 is what we're talking about, but 2 through 12 are all on the same schedule. We've allowed more days for our early learners, which are K4 through first grade. So they would be on a different little thing. So K4 through first grade, they would attend the day of their color. So if they're red, I'm a kindergartner, I'm going to attend on Monday and Tuesday in phase two and I'm also going to attend on Wednesday because we're bringing all of our early learners in on Wednesday. We're bringing K4 through first grade in on Wednesday and on their days that they were assigned by their colors. Was that better? Okay. So phase one is the most restrictive. It's when students, they're in their color groups. So each color would come one day a week and there would be intensive cleaning in between the days. And of course, our early learners would come on their day and they would also attend on Tuesday and Thursday on the cleaning days, the K4 through first grade. So the least amount of days that K4 through first grade would attend would be three. That would be the least amount of days for those early learners. Even when other students may have one day of learning, the K4 through first grade will come three days. So the hybrid teaching and learning model would include some face-to-face, which would be direct instruction, it would be new instruction. So depending on what phase kids are in, it could be a very small group of kids that the teacher's working with. So if they were in phase one and they're coming one day a week, the teacher would work very intensely with this small group of students, providing direct instruction. Now for the students that are at home, they would receive teacher-made materials, they would receive recordings of the lesson so that they can continue on. Each student would have a calendar of their learning so they can keep track, so parents can continue to keep track of what they're supposed to be doing when they're at home. Also during the return to school, we would focus on social emotional learning, social distancing and our preventive measures, washing your hands before and after meals, whenever you leave the room, whenever you return, those kind of things. We provide a weekly calendar from teachers to clarify the teaching and learning tasks for the students. And this, and we would also have targeted priority standards for those days when we're not in there all day. We have already decided what those targeted priority standards are from our curriculum teams. So when they're on less than, like if they're on a, come to school one day, we're making sure they get the targeted standards that they need. And then our virtual school option, which we're calling Aitken Innovate, is for students in kindergarten through 12th grade and these will be our teachers, our curriculum, our pacing. We're asking parents to make a minimum of a one semester commitment if you decide to do virtual, only because of the resources needed to run a virtual, want to make sure that we're equipped to do all those things. And these are the requirements for virtual. Hundred percent of instruction is at home, local teachers who are certified and they're solely dedicated to teaching online. So these are not the same teachers who would be teaching face-to-face. These teachers would be committed and dedicated to solely teaching students online. There will be virtual meetings, collaborative discussions and interactive resources and we're asking that adult be dedicated to partner with that teacher to help students be successful at home. And there's that minimum of one semester commitment. So the last part of this slide is remote learning and that would happen if we're required to by the state to close the doors of the school. Then as Mary Glenn mentioned, we're going to one-to-one for 3 through 12. So that's where that remote learning piece would come at the very bottom of the slide. And that is all I have for you, subject to your questions.
All right. So we can ask some questions and ask some comments, but make sure your mic is on so that the folks at home can hear and the folks in the audience can hear. Let's do like two questions apiece and then kind of go and let everyone do that and then come back around for another round if we have to, so that someone else might have the same question. Who wants to go first?
Thank you. Great presentation. I have self questions. I don't care to break away. If the majority wanted, if the majority of people on the service wanted a return to normal, why is that not? Well, it's bigger than, so to speak, but why is that not?
Well, we also took into consideration the safety and health issues because we, on the return to normal, there was also that caveat of health, safe conditions, which currently are the social distancing, which all of our facilities cannot, well, none of our facilities can take a hundred percent of their students and social distance them six feet radius around each student in a classroom.
And my next question is, was about, you mentioned targets and standards being met. How are the targets and standards are going to be met on a particular day?
You want to jump in on it? So the curriculum teams that Dr. Gable mentioned are deciding the priority standards now. Some of those curriculum teams have already met. The state is also releasing priority standards and so we can't hit them all, that's for certain, but we'll hit the priority standards that one day a week, two days a week, three days a week, but will also, students will get the resources through video and if they don't have the internet, we'll download those items onto the laptops or give them paper-based instruction if they need it. And then the teacher will be available on days that the students aren't in school to provide them with assistance. So we're wanting to deliver new instruction on the days that the kids are in school and give them resources that they need while they're at home on the other days.
I assume you have seen the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Yes, sir. We saw the article.
Where they cite as really not much difference between six feet and two feet.
Yes, sir.
Which means you could put a lot more kids in the classroom using a three-foot relative as opposed to a six-foot, a foot.
Yes, sir.
And they make a very strong case about not using social distancing as a reason to not returning kids back to school full-time. They feel that it's a, that the downside, all the negatives outweigh the risk of acquiring the virus, given that according to them, the kids don't catch it that much and they don't spread it that much. They don't define how much that much is which bothers them. Anyway, I just wondered if y'all had taken that into consideration in making the plan?
Yes, sir. We've been going back and forth with that. We've all read that article for sure.
The virtual learning that you talked about, if a parent opts for that, they have just virtual learning, is it going to be new information just as if, intended just as if it were in a classroom?
Yes, sir.
Not just on that one, two days or three days, always thinking of teachers teaching just as if they were in a classroom?
Yes, sir.
It won't be interactive, it will just be dynamic?
So in K through eight, it will be interactive. So they will follow our pacing, our teachers, there'll be discussion boards, so videos, web conferencing with students and so it'll be as interactive as we can make it without, you know, the students actually being in the classroom, but our goal is to make it as interactive as possible.
What about the wifi issue?
So.
Having dynamic lessons without the interaction that kids are watching?
Yes, sir. Well, we'll have videos. Our curriculum teams are also working on videos that the teachers can use as resources, but when we're talking about totally virtual instruction, the teacher will provide instruction to the students. So internet will be a necessity. We will have hotspots that the state has asked us how many we might possibly need. So we haven't gotten follow-up information from them about that, but our goal would be to provide hotspots to students who would need internet access.
Just as a matter of logistics, let's make sure we speak into the mics because the folks at home are having a hard time hearing the questions. So try to make sure that, and maybe say it loudly and maybe say it twice or something like that so Dr. Gable and the public can hear what we're saying too. So appreciate it. We're going to come back around.
Dr. Bradley got one of mine. So I have been asked and I really don't know enough to answer this question. When we say sanitize, what is going on to sanitize? Are they wiping or they spraying? We see on TV where there's sprays, a component on everything. What does that entail? I've been asked that a couple of times.
Okay, so part of what we're talking about is kids actually sanitizing their hands and then sanitizing, so a combination of spraying, wiping. Dr. Yarborough, do you want to say anything specific about? Dr. Yarborough, do you want to say anything specific about that?
On those days when students are in the schools, we will be sanitizing or disinfecting all touchable surfaces during class changes, uh, middle and high schools. Uh, in the elementary schools where kids don't change classes, a minimum of one time, an hour, each hour during the day, sanitizing all touchable surfaces. So, Mr. Smith, we're talking about things like door handles, uh, panic bars, um, countertops. Uh, student desks will be sanitized each day, once a day after students leave. Uh, on those days when students are not in attendance, uh, there will be a more deep clean process going on. Uh, we'll use the agent that we use, which is an antiviral disinfecting, uh, agent, that is very, very efficient at killing COVID-19, among many other, uh, viruses. But, uh, a more deep cleaning process on those days, using that agent for mopping floors, uh, again, cleaning student desks, all touchable surfaces, so, yes, sir.
Is it a combination of wiping and spraying?
Well, yes, sir, uh, you know, the agent is most effective when it can be sprayed and allowed to air dry. But of course, in some cases, we might not have enough time between one student leaving a classroom and another group of kids coming in, and the surfaces might still be wet. So we might have to wipe in those cases. But where we can, we will spray and allow it to dry, because that's when it's most effective.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one quick question to follow up on that. So bathrooms and seats, once a day?
No, ma'am, bathrooms will be cleaned, uh, again, after each class change, and in an amount, elementary school at least once an hour, so multiple times during the day.
All right, we're going to do something a little off-key here. Mr. Nestle has a couple of questions, um, does someone have access to him?
Mr. Nestle, go ahead with your question, please.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, I, I just, we can see him too, but, um, if somebody, these things are just saying, if somebody thinks they're just verifying stuff, um, but I was just reacting to that last comment, so, do we have enough custodial staff, or do exactly, to be cleaning the school like all day long? Come up clean, clean areas, like cleaning all every class change, and...
Did everyone hear that question?
I mean, I just wanted to check, are we, are we staffed for that?
Well, what we're going to do to address that situation is we will alter the, uh, schedules of our custodians, so that we have more custodians working during the day than we normally would. We normally have a, a late shift that works primarily when students are gone. Uh, but during this phase that we're referring to, we will have, uh, custodians, uh, shifting their schedules, so that we have more staff on hand during the day, so that we can effectively, effectively clean, uh, on a, on a regular schedule, multiple times during the day.
Okay. Um, if, if, well, I've got to there, but, one thing I was wondering about would be, um, will we need to look at, or will it be important to change, they, like the air exchange rate in the schools? Um, or are there any recommendations around that, if we have the DAC or anyone else? As far as getting more fresh air in the schools, or not?
Tim, would you repeat the question?
Yes, so his question was whether or not we would, uh, alter the exchange rate or the circulation rate of, uh, air in the schools, because of course, it's one of the CDC's guidelines that we try to introduce, uh, fresh air, and also, uh, filter the air more frequently. So, the, the answer to that is, we can do that. Of course, it would be extremely costly, uh, but we certainly can, uh, run our HVAC systems on what's called an occupied schedule, which means that we would, uh, run them, uh, not just as we currently do from approximately 6:30 in the morning until about 5:30 in the afternoon. We could run them, uh, more frequently during times when the building's not occupied. That is, of course, very costly, but it can be done.
Okay. Um, all righty, so, um, thank you, just let me know if we need to rotate. I'm just giving some questions, those folks are talking.
Yeah, how about one more?
This one, uh, this one, I'm not sure is, uh, I'm not sure who needs to answer it. But, you know, when I wrote the accelerated task force document, um, there's a lot of stuff in there that I would call the state guideline. And, what is, especially when it comes to hygiene, um, and, you know, social distancing and things like that, what are the things that are being mandated by the state versus, uh, the guidelines that we're being asked to use? I hope I too, it might be helpful to outline what is absolutely required, because it is not our choice.
So, from the accelerated, um, guidelines, those are all recommendations. Um, so I can't think of anything that is a mandate in that group of recommendations. And Molly Spearman has said, when she's talked about those, that they are specific recommendations, and districts should use them to guide their planning, um, even the 20 days. Um, you know, that, they're recommending that we get that done, so we are, you know, we want to do that for our parents and community, but those are all recommendations.
One, one thing that may carry a weight, a little more weight than a guideline, and even if it's not a mandate, but, um, the state superintendent know very strongly about teachers not doing double duty. And so that's why we've been very, that's not why we would have done that anyway, but we've been very careful to ensure that we don't have teachers teaching in the classroom during the day, and then doing a second shift of teaching virtual. So, those two functions will be, will be separate. But if there is a, if there is something that could be considered a mandate, that would be it, that, uh, we wanted to make sure that our teachers were not being required to, uh, to do double duty.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll come, we'll come back to you there, Mr. Nestle, we'll, we'll continue on, that's all right.
Sure.
Dr. Gamble, very good presentation, we appreciate it. I, I think this is a lot of information, and the task force, obviously you all have done a lot of work. Um, and I think one of the reasons there aren't mandates from the state is because I think they're looking, they're, they don't know the local, you know, districts as well as, as they, as, they don't want to dictate something to the local districts, because something may not make sense to them, too. So I, I think they're, that's why they're giving a lot of flexibility in these recommendations and stuff. So, um, just my two questions for this, uh, pass-through. Um, I was kind of expanding on what Dr. Bradley said. You all met with the physicians, local physicians in the area. Were they pretty comfortable with the, the items that you all have in place for disinfection, for social distancing, and all those things, or, um...
So it was really more of information gathering, um, from them, rather than telling them, this is what we're planning on doing, um, what do you think about it? So, you know, we just kind of opened it up to, how do you feel about returning to school? Um, wearing masks, temperature checks, um, want to add anything, anybody? Uh, so it was really more of a dialogue. They would give us their feedback from questions we posed.
And you incorporated those things that they kind of probably felt strongly about into the plan.
We did.
Okay. Um, okay, so the difference between Phase Three and Phase Four, I guess, is just that middle day when there's the disinfectant, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that gives us a kind of a day to reset, um, and then the students come back on Thursday and Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, good. Mr. Crane?
I have a lot of questions, but I'll stick to the, for right now.
Stick to the program.
So, I appreciate all this information, and I appreciate, as, as I've shot lots of questions to Mr. Lawrence, I know that's filtered back and forth before I get responses, and I'm very appreciative of that. Uh, a couple of things that, that, uh, we haven't really been touched on today. Can you speak a little bit, or can someone speak a little bit about, um, how we are integrating SPED and IEP compliance? Uh, I've had a lot of questions about those, uh, those two separate things, but I'll open one question to Crane.
Yes, who had, um, in the director, especially?
So, Mr. Crane was asking about, uh, integrating, uh, SPED and, uh, IEPs, right? Just kind of speaking into the mic a little bit more?
Oh, yeah, that is not...
Yeah, that's...
Thank you, buddy, for the question. We've been working closely with all of the general education counterparts to figure out the massive plan for the entire school district, and then coupled in, how are we going to continue to provide quality supports to students with disabilities throughout whatever phase it is that we're dictated and will go into. So for us, we're looking at teletherapy options for those parents who choose virtual only, because we recognize that some of our students who have compromised immune systems, where they won't be able to return to a full school capacity. So we're looking at the best possible option, given any of these different circumstances.
Next question, uh, does not have anything to do with SPED, thank you for that. Um, I've had a lot of parents reaching out to me, particularly younger kids, let's just say elementary age, because there's a range, that are concerned about requiring that age group to wear masks. Part of it's just, you know, kids want to fit on, not want to have some on their face. Uh, some of it's legit medical concerns, uh, you know, all those are very real, uh, issues, and if y'all talk about that, and any thoughts there?
Yes, Mr. King's going to, Mr. Lawrence is going to answer that one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Crane. Yeah, we had that conversation with principals today, because they had, had some concerns about it. And, um, you know, requiring the mask be worn, and having, uh, mask problems be, say, a discipline concern or something like that, we want to be very sure that, that nothing like that occurs. Um, we know that we're going to have students who, um, who maybe have ADHD, we're going to have students who are autistic, we're going to have students who are four years old. And, and those students are going to have a very difficult time, um, with masks. I would encourage, um, families to practice wearing masks. I hope if, if, if we're going into, into grocery stores and other public places, that we're, that we're trying to get our, our children to, to wear the mask. I know it's tough, they're going to feel it, they're going to be touching their faces, they're going to be pulling them off, and all of those kinds of things. Um, but, um, and we, and we know that that's going to happen. So, the, the, uh, message that I gave with principals today was to use common sense. We know that, um, CDC recommends masks, we know the DAC recommends masks, we know that, uh, the federal health officials recommend it. Pediatricians that we met with recommend masks. So to the extent possible, we want all of the individuals in our buildings to be wearing masks, recognizing that that's something very difficult for very young children, and, um, it's difficult for me. I have a tough time with it. So, um, we got a good look at it this morning, uh, with students in our ARC program, which is Academic Recovery Camp, which started today, and, and very small groups of kids. In fact, the pictures I saw, there may have been some classes with as many as eight kids, but the classes I saw today had about four kids in them. And one student were in the classroom, and, and if they were seated at their desk, they're pretty much taking their masks off and sitting in front of them, because the social distancing was, was taken care of. Um, if they left the classroom, they put their masks back on, if they, you know, sat on the floor with each other to, to work in a small group with their teacher, well, they're already a small group, but they sat on the floor to work with their teacher, they put their masks back on. Um, and, and it looked, uh, hopefully, uh, tomorrow or, or Thursday, I can, I can get into those classes, but it looked like it was working very well. Uh, obviously, when more students get into the classroom, it, it could become, uh, more troublesome. But, uh, again, use common sense, uh, put the, the well-being and the interest of our students first, and, um, work with them and their parents, uh, to help them to understand the importance of it, and just do the best we can.
Thank you, I've only had one or two parents specifically, uh, mention to me that their kids are ready to be back in school, they want their kids back in school, but their child has like a breathing issue, or something like that. So in that specific case, um, I guess I'm just asking that we have some leeway if there's a child with like a bronchial issue, or something like that, so, thank you.
Yeah, and just one more thing, and certainly any student who cannot, um, on his or her own, remove the mask, we would not, we would not have that student wearing a mask. We certainly have some, um, some, some students who would be in that situation, so...
Go ahead, Ms. Sheen.
Um, do we know yet what time the school will start, and what time it'll end, and are there going to be changes to that, as we know more?
I think a lot of that is going to depend on when we get our numbers back from, well, actually, first I would say it's going to depend on what your approval is. And then, when we get the numbers back for the kids who are going to, um, virtual, full-time virtual, versus going to school, how many kids can we get on the bus? All of that will play into, when we get the numbers, of how many kids are actually returning. Then we can make a better decision of, do we need to stagger buses, or do we not need to stagger times?
All right. And then another question that I had, um, from someone in my community, they were wanting to know if we're going to have recess for the kids, and what that will look like, what kinds of regulations will be in place?
Well, we did talk about recess for, for the little ones at elementary level. We, we just encouraged not to have big groups of kids. So if we were in Phase One, and there were ten kids in your class, you could take them out, and, you know, wipe off the equipment, and watch them social distance, and that would be fine. We understand that kids are not going to be able to sit through a whole day of school without something, even if it's get up and wiggle around, or, or something for, for kids who are going to have to have some kind of, um, brain break. And I don't know if I answered your question, but we haven't worked it out completely, but we are considering that it needs to happen.
And I guess that, you know, you kind of answered this, and just kind of go along with that. We have a midterm yet, of course, because we don't know how many kids are going, and how many we're looking at, that would be in each classroom yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Silas, good. Dr. Gamble and, and team, I guess, uh, I thought I had a tough job. I think, uh, I'll, I'll, I've got a new benchmark for that, uh, now, so, appreciate, you know, all the hard work, and it continues. But, um, and, and I apologize, this mask, with the mask, my glasses fog up, so, if it's there, just, I guess, read it to me, but, but what are the, what's, what's the criteria for phase selection?
That is a great question. And it's one that we will turn over to Mr. Lawrence.
And a lot has to do with, with recommendations, like, um, you know, right now, if you, it depends on, on the maps and the information that you look at. Um, right now, today, out of forty-six counties, Aiken County is forty-fifth in the number of, of, uh, positive cases per one-hundred thousand in population. McCormick is, is, uh, is forty-six, we're forty-fifth. So, when you look at it from a standpoint of the saturation of the population, we're, we're in a pretty good spot. When you look at it from a standpoint of increasing raw numbers of cases, um, we're not doing as well as we were doing a month ago. Um, we have, if, if the trend continues, we've kind of made a turn this week. I think on Friday, we had, uh, thirty-four or thirty-six cases in Aiken County. Saturday, it was down to twenty, Sunday, it was nine, and yesterday, it was fifteen. So it's, it's, it's kind of trying to push itself, self-down a little bit. So when you see numbers like that, that kind of leads you to, to feeling more comfortable with, um, with accepting a greater level of risk in the classroom. But that, that's one of the things that, that the CDC says. You have to look at the level of risk that a community or a school district, um, is willing to accept. Obviously, the lowest risk is total virtual. And I think if you had the resources, and, and the coverage with, um, with, with internet accessibility and all of those things, and, and you had the support in the home, uh, across the board, and, and that might be the way to go, because it, it is absolutely the lowest risk from a disease standpoint. That's not discounting Dr. Bradley pointing out, uh, what our pediatricians here in Aiken said in agreement with the Academy of Pediatrics, um, that we have to weigh that against the social-emotional... Um, that we have to weigh that against the social emotional risks that, that our students encounter. Medium risk would be like the hybrid, one of those, one of those, um, phases that we're talking about that, um, you know, part of the time they're face-to-face in the classroom, other part of the time they're doing, uh, remote learning. And the highest risk is pretty much more like back to school. So we have to look at, at the conditions, what are the recommendations that we're getting from D E C, what are the recommendations we're getting from the, um, from the Accelerated Task Force and from the State Department of Education? Um, I don't think we would want to be getting recommendations from, from basically the majority of the es- experts if they were saying, you know, it's not safe to, uh, to have more than, uh, eight kids in a typical eight-hundred-square-foot classroom. And for us to just ignore that and say, nah, we're going to put twenty-four kids in there. So, so it really is a fluid situation where we have to listen to the experts. You know, maybe we know more a week from today, maybe we know more, uh, in, in three weeks on, on, uh, July twenty-eighth when we meet again. Uh, but we have to always look at it in a fluid situation. As far as having specific benchmarks where we say if we got, uh, ten new cases, we're going to do this, or, or if, if we're, over the course of two weeks, we're rising by, you know, five cases a day or something like that, we haven't set those benchmarks. It really is looking at the recommendations from, uh, both state and national experts.
Okay. Um, my next question would be, have we developed or are we developing our response to positive cases?
Yes, we have, um, and our nurse is not here today, but we do have a protocol for response to positive cases and contact tracing and also notification, who needs to be notified, how the notification would take place. The training for the, um, people at the school, two people will be trained to specifically handle those incidences, so yes, we have developed that.
Okay, good, Mr. Larnery said I had two questions, but you didn't say a comment, so I'm quite a little sometime. No, just something I don't know if you thought about, I, um, I don't know the medical considerations, I've heard some of it on television, mask versus shields. I just know of another school district in state for the early childhood classes, and they chose to go with face shield because of facial expression, uh, you know, from the teachers, so have we considered that or is that? You've considered everything, I'm sure you have, so.
So actually, uh, Mr. Lawrence mentioned our ARC program, Academic Recovery Camp, that started today. Our, um, teachers are using face shields, so we're, we're piloting that in the ARC program and, um, particularly for our early learners, um, some of our students who are just learning to read, um, and those who have speech difficulties. We want to make sure that students can see their, their mouths move, so we are definitely considering that.
Okay, thank you. I guess it was a question, I forgot.
Yeah, you get, you get one next time. Dr. Gamble and everyone, y'all are doing a great job, I don't know a better way to do this, I feel like it's an inquisition or something like that, so hopefully you aren't, um, uncomfortable. Uh, you're doing a great job, I mean, these are just questions I think that we have, the public has had, so, I mean, please, we're not trying to put anyone on the spot in anything, so just, you know, everyone relax a little bit too. And I'm not like looking at the internet up here, I'm actually getting some questions from Mr. Bolton that couldn't be with us, so before we go to Ms. Jackson, I'm going to take his two questions and then, uh, we'll come around there, so.
I, I, Mr. Bolton, are you here?
Are he texting to tell you?
He is, he is.
Oh, that's even better.
Yep, go ahead with your, uh, first question, sir.
Can you turn up a little bit?
Okay, um, first of all, before I even ask the question, I want to build a team there and including Dr. Gamble, that I just say, wow, this is really great God, I see a product. And I feel a lot of thought and a lot of concern in wanting to see what they've done. And so the, the question, no more just to help us, um, like, like Mr. Larnery was saying. Um, my first question, and I do have three, just put it, is that the one there? Um, my first one is probably E P, and it is, um, where we have the common days or whatever we learn, like if phase one, these common days are two, consider this, and if phase two, the common day is six. Are we still dividing them up into groups like the cohorts? Uh, and if we're, they're not going to be in a classroom with fifteen or eighteen students, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we are dividing them into cohorts, so they will go to school on their cohort day and they will have additional time at school on a Tuesday or Thursday, depending on what phase they're in. So they, they will be in a cohort with a small group also.
Okay, so they're still staying in their cohort.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, during those extra days that they come in, we're using additional teachers sort of like related arts or they may rotate, they, the teachers are rotating, the kids will stay in the same spot. But we're, they'll also be in small groups because we'll be using additional teachers who will not have a group during those times.
Okay, I, I thought, no, I just wanted to be sure, I thought, okay, my second question is, um, I noticed for the, for the, um, uh, cafeteria, uh, the evening plans, um, for some reason, the, the element of school were separated out. As far as how people got to feel that, and the principal not being able to use their discretion, and I'm just wondering why that, you know, I'm sure there's a reason why they're not being able to do that under one condition.
I think one of the reasons, well, I'm sure one of the reasons, where we were keeping elementary kids in their cohorts, sort of like little families, so they were having less interactions with people outside of their cohort. So we felt like if they could continue to stay with their cohort, have lunch, play, all of that, if something were to happen, we would easily be able to, to determine who they had been in contact with.
Okay, all right, thank you, you made a perfect question, that was the question that, of course, excuse me, but you may get a follow-up question there.
Yes, sir.
And then another question I had, um, I think you've already addressed, sounds like there are teachers that are resistant to face shield, um, and it sounds like you're actually supporting that in the ARC. And I, I'm like, Mr. Silas, I think it's really good, or, or face shield would probably be beneficial in, in, um, sometimes they, they kind of, you know, feel loose and close, and then other times, there are times where you're, you're, in, in age regression, probably more so in the older, uh, or next age. So anyway, I think you're, you guys are thinking of an option, the teachers should need it.
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, we're going to move on to Ms. Jackson.
I, I do both my questions, and you brought the address, and you were trying, you know, I can't see, I only get last one, and I think I said, we, this is a funny number board. Um, the last one was, um, basically, when was, uh, cohortization to be to the school, that, that will check the teacher and brothers and sisters, you know, fifth and girl, it works?
So we feel like our first step is determine what students will actually be virtual. And then we'll have our Director of Accountability and Assessment to pull a roster of schools of kids across the district. Because we don't want to leave out those kids who have special permission, we want to make sure that they're with their families also, so. And then we'll, we'll, um, create that list for principals so that they know what color cohort these kids are in, so they can collaborate with each other if they have to move them. But the timeline is dependent on getting all kids registered. So we hope to go out with another communication about everybody registering, so we can be sure that we have it.
All right, we're going to move on to Ms. Jackson.
Okay, my question is, uh.
Thank you, sir.
My question is for Ms. Bobby. You had mentioned, um, teletherapy options for, um, those students who might not be able to come back for, to school or whatever, for whatever reason, for their immune system being compromised.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my question is two-part. First of all, um, by providing teletherapy, will we still be in compliance, um, as far as the laws are concerned when it comes to IEPs? Um, and is the state considering waiving, um, any kind of, what's the word I'm looking for, guidelines that we're currently, um, that we currently have to, um, do in order to accommodate our kids during this time? Um, so that we can probably get what they need, um, you know, in a manner that will, um, benefit them and not come back to, uh, find us, for lack of a better word right now. And come back to find us later on by parents saying, okay, while our child was here, you did not probably give that, right, so that's my question.
So to respond to the first question as far as the HIPAA regulations, we've been in contact with our IT group, along with state and federal officials in regards to which platforms can we utilize for teletherapy? Um, and actually, the district already had a platform within Microsoft Teams that actually met that requirement, so we have the platform. There are different aspects that we will need to purchase to make sure it's a, um, an enriching experience for our students. Um, we're working on getting those, um, POs done now because we recognize there will be instances, whether it's related to COVID or something else, that we will have to provide teletherapy to students. Um, so that's that one. For me, we have, um, since March, our guidance has been health and safety first, compliance second. We recognize I D E A was not built for a pandemic.
Right.
But we are building supports and services to make sure students are going to receive meaningful benefit from the support services we provide in light of the current circumstance.
All right, thank you. And my second question is, um, I guess it would be for you, Dr. Lawrence, I mean, Mr. Lawrence, actually, um, you talked about the phases and, you know, how we can go about that, but my question is, uh, very specific. Um, because I want to know, um, as of today, uh, right now in this moment, what phase is recommended, um, at this time by task force? Going by today and everything that you know.
So I'm not going to, I'm not going to give a, um, recommendation from the task force.
Or yourself, then.
But, but, um, right now, today, um, you know, if we were going back to school, I would feel very comfortable with, with phase two right now. Especially knowing that, um, that any, any parents and any students who, who wanted to do virtual learning, we would, we would have the opportunity for them to do that. I think it gives us a chance to, um, um, I don't want to say ease into school, but, but it gives us a chance to, um, to get started back without a, you know, a full, um, a full building full of students. Uh, that, um, it, it gives us time to see how interactions are going to take place, see how the flow of the, of the hallways, see how the, how, um, feeding students, uh, gets accomplished. See how transportation and what, um, you know, what does a half-full of school bus look like and how does it, how long does it take us to run enough routes to get those, get those students into schools? So we're looking at, at half of the student population, uh, doing that, and also if we're looking at really less than half the student population, because if we were to assume that twenty percent, um, decided that they wanted virtual learning, then we'd be looking at forty percent of our population. And that would give us a good picture of what eighty percent of the population will look like, how much time we're going to need to transport students, how much time we're going to need to feed students, uh, what the flow of traffic within the school and around the school is going to look like. Um, it gives us the opportunity to work, uh, in a, in a smaller group with students with, um, with new devices for one-to-one, uh, that's going to be something that's new for all of our students. So the teachers can work with half of their students at a time, preparing them for one-to-one instruction, whether that one-to-one instruction is happening in the classroom in a, at a, at a normal, um, you know, hundred percent occupancy, back to school in, in, in normal fashion. Or whether that's happening with distance learning. Um, it, it, it gives teachers, it gives students, uh, it gives the system the opportunity to, um, to get things right and, and, and make sure that we've got all of the processes in place. Now, that's if we were going to school tomorrow, I don't know what my answer would be, uh, for the next.
Thank you.
Dr. Brad?
I would like to, uh, compliment the committee on developing a program that's flexible. I really like the flexibility and the phases and so forth where you can gauge what you do based on how bad things are. Question is, I don't think we have a real good definition of how bad things are, uh, in relation to what phase we go to. And I, I, I would certainly like to have a better understanding of who's going to determine the phase and how it's going to be done. Da-da-da-da-dah, when do we change from one phase to another? The problem is, this is going to play hell with parents, schedule and, you know, daycare, childcare, that kind of thing, all, most of the feedback I get has been we need to go full-time because there's not enough daycare available in Aiken County to accommodate all these kids. And before, when we shut down, everything was shut down. And that's not the case now, parents are coming back to work and it's really going to be a problem for parents. Um, and there are a lot of very anxious parents about this out there. Mr. Lawrence, you know, I, I agree, if, if we want to test from the, from the school district viewpoint, two days a week is great. But, you know, do we expect parents to start out with a two-day-a-week plan and then have to go to a zero, I mean, you know, having to do childcare for four days a week or what? I mean, changing, you know, it, it's going to be hard enough to, to structure their situation. But then when we change it in two weeks or two months, then that's really going to be difficult, because then they've got to go back and make a whole new set of childcare arrangements. And the headlines in the paper, yeah, I think it was yesterday, the day by sixteen thousand kids missing, um, off the grid. I, I really worry what this is going to do to families and children and mental health and families and children, not to mention the, the economic impact of having to pay childcare or worse, yeah, just leaving the kids at home alone. You know, which is some kid, parents are going to do because they can't afford to do anything else. Yeah, that, this is, should be a major consideration in terms of safety, health, welfare of children. And we don't think about the home environment being our responsibility, but it is, but we do things that affect the home environment, and we're fixing to turn it upside down, no matter what we do. Um, so, so that's a long, I don't know if there's a question in there or not, let me, here's, here's my question about all that. I don't think you've got it yet, but, but, um, I think we need to have in place a procedure for determining what phase, what, what alert level, you know, are we, are we red, orange, yellow, what, what alert level are we at? In terms of what phase we're going to implement and what data, uh, are we going to look at to make that determination? And I know it's very gentle when we talk about it, but, but King did a great job of saying, we've got, uh, we're, we're forty-fifth and forty-sixth, you know, we had the upturn, now we had a downturn. Watching those kinds of trends, I think, is what it's got to be, um, you know, and making these decisions about how effective it is to send a kid. If we could start, God, I don't want to say this, but, but scientifically you could start with a fuller schoolhouse and see if kids get sick and then make a decision to downface it. I'm not saying that seriously, but, but, you know, that's the kind of data that we don't know what's going to happen, we really don't know what's going to happen when we send children back to school. We don't know if they're going to get a whole bunch of them sick, or, or, or we're not going to see any changes in the illness level and, and that kind of thing, so. There, there is no good answer, I certainly don't have the answer, uh, you know, I'm, I'm just quite concerned about the whole thing, I don't think, no matter what we do, it's not going to be right. You, you hit it right on the head with your first line, uh, no matter what we do, it's not going to be right, but what can we do to be safe? I think, uh. I hope like something, man.
I have, uh, I received a message here just now from a parent asking, would the district be providing masks and shields?
So, right now, the State Department is providing five masks for each teacher and two masks for each student.
Per day?
Uh, no, they're, um, reusable, washable masks that the, um, State Department is providing. And then Mr. Lawrence might want to jump in and talk about the district.
Yeah, we may determine that, that two masks per student is enough, so, um, we're going to be prepared to, to have a supply as well. Uh, students will lose their masks, students will forget their masks, their own, both masks will be in the laundry. Uh, students will lose their masks, students will forget their masks, their own, both masks will be in the laundry at the same time, so we'll be prepared for those kinds of things.
Secondly, this is a question I received as well. Who will be, this came from a teacher, who will be in charge of sanitizing these classrooms, bathrooms and so forth? And I will tell you the way I answer it, and you may, um, may wanna add something to it, but it's a concern and it came to me from a teacher. I, I said primarily our custodians. In reality, everyone. And I think, I don't know if that's the best we can do, but parents are asking that, teachers are asking that because they're concerned with that being their baby, solely their baby. I think that's a concern that's out there with some teachers.
So, in my mind, and one of the things that came up during task force meetings was things like manipulatives or books that a teacher uses in a classroom. So certainly, teachers would have to join in and help in cleaning efforts. So when you said all, we, we would all have to chip in and help with making sure our, our classrooms were um, sanitized on a daily basis because the custodians will, will increase the level of sanitation and um, the cleaning that they do, but um, teachers need to also chip in and help with that, with those additional things they use in their classrooms.
Uh, I'm gonna ask one question and then we'll get to Mr. Nestle here. Um, how about extracurricular activities like sports and band and orchestra and things like that? Have y'all started to talk about that at all, how we're gonna accommodate those things?
Do you wanna talk?
Sorry.
So as far as sports, we're following um, the South Carolina High School League, um, with, um, you know, when practices are and how many students can be on the field. Um, and band, um, following the same guidelines. Um, with music right now, as far as chorus, um, we're following the guidelines from the national associations which are, you know, no singing right now. So, um, any guidelines that we get, we're trying to follow those and include it in the advanced ed recommendations. There's some um, guidelines for those things as well, so. Did that answer your question?
I guess we're gonna have them, but they're, they're restricted by the governing body, I guess is the way to answer it.
Right. Now, we can make local decisions, um, but we use their guidelines to help us make those local decisions.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Crane, and then we go to Mr. Nestle.
A follow-up to that, actually, because that was one of my questions. Thank you for taking it. Um, what about elementary level, like art and can you speak a little bit to that?
So in the elementary level, the specials rotations will go into the classrooms. So we'll have to consider things like supplies, which supplies can't be shared, um, but definitely we want to make sure that our kids have opportunities for specials, that they'll go into the classroom versus the students. Moving.
We're gonna try to go to Mr. Nestle again. Mike, can you get him?
Yes, sir.
And uh, he's, everyone's still having a little bit of trouble here, and so just try to speak as lively as you can into the mics.
Go ahead, Mr. Nestle.
And last, and please, with me questioning, let me get on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, that's much better.
Okay, but, all right, now, so I apologize, as far as being on the phone, I've kind of cut out about fifteen minutes ago as far as being here, but uh, I tried to follow along from the department. Um, so, you know, take a little word. Um, I was curious, do, one thing is, uh, it can, it can come later, but I was curious if there was a recommendation about, or if we know where the five leak days are gonna go and how that can be done?
So we're just in the initial planning phases of the five leak days. Um, those were approved, uh, a week and a half, two weeks ago. We have a meeting tomorrow morning, um, with staff to discuss the five leak days. So hopefully we'll have some more information for you next week, if we can maybe share that then, we'll be more prepared.
Yep, sure, no, okay. Um, and, and going along with, um, with Dr., I thought what Dr. Bradley was saying on the live stream. Um, I was curious, so have we can, have we done any research or canvassing to figure out, you know, to put people in their childcare situation, so along the financial impact? Have we investigated if childcare is even available for folks? That, that they could be on a different schedule?
We have sent a survey as far as our staff, um, trying to make sure that, um, you know, if we're not in school on certain days, which of our staff, not only teacher staff, but um, not only teachers, but school food service, custodians, do you have kids twelve and under that are in our, um, schools that would need childcare? So, um, we're trying to make sure that we accommodate at least our staff right now, but we know that childcare is gonna be an issue. I think we had, um, around four hundred and eighty um, students who are twelve and under who belong to Aitken County Public School District staff that we would want to try to figure out how to accommodate them on their non-colored day possibly. So it was just something that was talked about and felt strongly about by the task force that, you know, um, if our teachers and staff are coming to work, we wanna make sure that their kids are taken care of if they're twelve and under. Uh, we know our families, it's gonna be an issue for them, so we have reached out to Quest Zone, um, who provides extended care to possibly talk about opportunities, um, but those are in the beginning stages of discussion, so I don't have an answer for that completely tonight, but it is something that we're trying to locate a solution for.
Okay, that's just, uh, all right, thank you for that. Um, the, so the, and, and sometimes I can just step on details, but when I looked at the plan, this is just a little bit question. Um, so, on different, the different schedules with the early learners, we're gonna be in school certain days that other folks were not depending on their cohort. Um, there's also a tendency today that we're gonna be declining and sanitizing schools. So, how, you know, how are we working around that? I just, it could be a real quick answer, is where are the rooms that, where are the, that early learners are gonna be at? When I think I'll be declined?
So, because there will only be the, the early learners there, there will be opportunities for the custodians to work in rooms that are not occupied by them until after they leave school, and then those rooms will be sanitized.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, do, do we know yet as far as, so, and, and sometimes it's not easy when you're going to the group station, you can't actually hear it. So, uh, specifically, who's gonna be creating the virtual lessons?
So we'll have teachers that are hired specifically for the virtual students, and those teachers will create those virtual lessons.
Okay.
But they wouldn't be doing the, um, everyday face-to-face and brick-and-mortar lessons. They would just be responsible for the virtual lessons.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Do you wanna keep going around the room?
Yeah, I was gonna try to, yeah, just to keep everyone engaged, uh, we'll come back to you, Cam, if that's all right?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Crane, go ahead. No, I'm good.
All right, I'm trying to speak directly loudly. Got a couple of questions, um, still. Um, this is from a teacher. Uh, for the teachers who are immunocompromised, um, ultimately, how is this gonna play out for them? Their understanding is that virtual might be a pay cut, if they can move to that? Uh, are they gonna be required to teach? Can we sort of speak on that?
Sure, so, um, uh, I would not anticipate pay cut, I'm not sure where that, um, originated, but that would not happen. Um, from a, a selection process for virtual teachers, law doesn't allow us to use disability as a selection criteria. Um, but it would certainly be our preference to keep all employees working. So if we have a teacher who can't come into a school building because they're significantly immunocompromised, um, we would love to be able to utilize them in a virtual capacity. We have to make certain that we know the numbers of how many virtual teachers we'll need, what content areas, uh, what grade levels, all of that information we need before we can begin the selection process. Um, the best way I can say it without breaking any laws regarding, um, uh, discrimination based on a, a criteria is that we would, we certainly give preference.
Thank you. Um, I think that, that pretty well answers that. Thank you so much. Uh, another question I got from, from a teacher, uh, and just looking at a couple of the phases, we've got days where 4K through first are essentially going every day. Uh, so those teachers are there every day. What, what's the status with the teachers who are not working? Or, let me rephrase that, who aren't teaching on some of those days, are they still working? Uh, and if, if they're not, I'm assuming they are.
They are working, sir. So that would be an opportunity for them to, um, reach out to their distance learners to have some office hours so that they can, you know, if kids are having any kind of concerns. That would also be a time for them to plan their lessons, so they can have lessons available, the videos, whatever they're sending home with the distant learners.
Thank you. I think it was just a, a perception issue, maybe, you know, like high school teachers don't have to work three days a week. So, they are, so, um, thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Um, I, I just wanna say to follow up with what some of my colleagues have already said, what I've heard from a lot of teachers and people in the community is that they are concerned about daycare and that kind of thing and what that's gonna look like. So, I'm glad to hear that y'all are having those conversations, you know, about, um, looking at Quest Zone, you know, looking at other alternatives. You know, I think that's gonna make everybody feel a lot better about that, so I appreciate that. Um, I'd like to hear if, if it's available, a little bit more information, if I could, about transportation and how that's gonna look like with the buses. I mean, one of the teachers emailed me and indicated that they were concerned, you know, if it's like on a staggered schedule and buses are continually coming in, being able to have that consistency and being able to have the lessons flow and things like that. I know y'all got it figured out, but, you know, if we could just hear a little bit more, if y'all have that ready.
Well, currently, um, we don't have the numbers to make that decision, but typically buses are a little staggered anyway coming in. So, you know, there's time for breakfast and kids usually arrive before the school day actually officially begins. So we anticipate that stagger will continue to allow time to take temperatures and for kids to get in classes. But we don't anticipate, depending on the numbers and what phase we're in, that it would be like a staggered period for a long period of time. Yeah, I don't, I don't imagine that it would be much longer than what we have now because kids can arrive at a middle school at seven-thirty, but instruction doesn't start till eight. So, uh, a lot of the staggering is at the front end before instruction begins.
Okay. And just one quick question, I know we've talked about the temperature checks and things like that. Do we have an idea of how many times a day that will be done? Is it just gonna be one or will it be done a few times or?
We haven't definitively decided, but we are looking at the recommendation from our local, um, medical personnel who suggested more than once. They suggested the morning when the kids arrive and then around one or two o'clock when the Tylenol has worn off. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Seifert, go ahead.
I know this, this presentation has been centered and rightly so around curriculum and, and, and getting back in school. But how does this play into, into athletics and all, which is probably a different discussion, but what, does anybody have any update on that and for the fall?
Um, the South Carolina High School League is, kind of drives, uh, competitive athletics, so, um, we look to them. I know that we got a survey, um, yesterday, I believe, just, just a couple of questions, um, asking about workouts and, and, um, what the, the different districts' thoughts were on, uh, on competition involved. Um, I know that Jerome Singleton, who is, is the executive director of the South Carolina High School League, is constantly talking with the same people we're talking to. And he and his executive board are, you know, asking those same questions, they're meeting regularly and, um, I don't think anybody wants, uh, competition between schools back more than he does. So if he can, if he can make that happen, he wants to make it happen, and so we're gonna, we're gonna follow whatever recommendations they, um, they put out.
Appreciate it. And I know to, to some, you know, especially our older, our high schools, right, it's such an important part of giving them an opportunity, you know, further their education. So I appreciate that view. Thanks.
All right, uh, it's like seven forty-five, so we've been here for an hour and forty-five minutes, so maybe, uh, one last round if we could. Uh, and Dr. Gamble, again, thanks for doing a great job, so.
All right, I understand that the nurses are here, but, um, I have a question that's been posed to me. Um, I would like to know what the protocol is gonna look like, um, that's just to, part, what the protocol is gonna look like if a child gets sick or if we're notified that a child has come in contact with some of COVID. And then I wanna know about the attendance guidelines. Um, if a child has to go out or a teacher has to go out, talk to me about your recommendations for what those guidelines should be or what do you feel, um, is gonna be best to suit our district?
Um, I might ask, it's hard to answer the, the employee part of that question, correct?
Happy to. So, um, the, there was a federal law put into place, the FFCRA, Families First, Corona, something that is FFCRA. Um, and that was put into place and we, um, you approved the addition of an administrative rule regarding that. Um, and so under FFCRA, uh, there, uh, the provision for ten paid working days, um, for a number of reasons related to COVID. And so that is in place through the end of this calendar year currently. Um, I, I don't know if the federal government will extend that. Um, I'm certain it will depend on the, the current situation of the pandemic across the country. Um, so if we have a teacher who, um, under medical guidance has to be quarantined or is, contracts COVID or has to provide care for COVID, uh, there, there are six different provisions under FFCRA that would provide ten paydays. Um, beyond that, then it becomes part of an FMLA, um, and falls under our league policy.
And from a student's standpoint, the, the CDC has very specific recommendations on, on how we approach a student who gets sick at school, or for that matter, an employee getting sick at school. Um, separating them from other students, um, designated in isolation area, contacting parents, uh, trying to get that student transported away from the school and, and to their home as, as quickly as possible. Um, but it really is about, um, school administrators, teachers, healthcare workers, uh, all of the folks who are involved with, with our students, working together to, to, to make sure that we do those things. One of the, one of the keys, one of the layers that, that has to be in place is staying home when you're sick. Um, I like, I like the joke that Dr. Gamble made about, uh, taking temperature again, uh, after the Tylenol wears off. And, and that was one, one of the things that, um, that the pediatrician said was, you know, they know things like that happen. Um, but it is so important, that layer of, of staying home when you're sick. So if an employee is sick, they need to stay home. There are, there are federal laws that protect their job. There are policies within Aitken County Public Schools that protect their job. If you're sick, stay home. Same thing with students. I mean, I, I, you know, I understand having, having been a parent um, of, of young children, I know the pressures of, you know, are you really sick? Let me check your temperature one more time before, before we decide what we, we're gonna do. But if there's any chance that the child is sick, there's got to be an arrangement made, uh, where the child will stay home and not come to school. And again, uh, if a student is discovered to be, uh, discovered to be sick at school, we follow those CDC guidelines. And again, if a student is discovered to be sick at school, we follow those CDC guidelines, isolation, contacting parents, and transporting that student as quickly as possible. And then there, of course, the contact tracing that Dr. Gamble mentioned earlier. We have to see who that student's been in contact with, and then, doesn't necessarily mean that the students or the adults that that student's been in contact with will be quarantined, but it certainly means that we monitor more closely for symptoms with those individuals.
And my very next question. I heard somebody say earlier, and forgive me, I don't remember who it was, that the virtual teachers will be coming up with their own lesson plans and teaching. My question, I guess, is if we're teaching one thing in the school with the students who are present, and we're teaching something different to those online, how is that supposed to come together eventually to assess where everybody is actively?
So the wonderful thing is, we have a guaranteed viable curriculum in our county that our teachers develop. So both the virtual teachers and our brick and mortar teachers will be following the curriculum and the pacing. So, you know, everybody should be in line so that we would be able to do those assessments.
I just want to follow up with that, that virtual has to be different. I mean, it's a different circumstance than face-to-face instruction interaction with students. So even though the pacing is the same and the content is the same, the delivery has to be adaptive, and so that's why those teachers will be responsible for developing that.
And when I, let me clarify too, when the, our teachers are helping to develop right now curriculum for those K through eight courses. So while there will be teachers to help deliver that, the courses are being developed by our teachers at this time. So we have people working on third grade E L A course that'll go into Schoology with the curriculum and pacing that we use, but the teachers will deliver that content.
Dr. Braden. Have you, do you have available to you any information from CDC or anybody about the, how the virus is affecting children? In other words, do we know how many children in Aiken County have the virus at any one time? We probably don't. I've never seen a report that it's always lumped together, that they don't break it down, demographic thing, condensed like or anything. I just wondered if there's data that I don't know about. But what I'm getting at, again, is we've got to find out what data we're going to look at and make decisions about where we go up here. I'm happy with this, but what I really want to know is where we're going to put, where we're going to start, and where we're going to have to get a change from one level to another. And I think we've got to try to identify data that tells us exactly what's going on with the kids, you know, as far as viruses and so on. And again, I can't, you know, I think that committees have to be the person to make the decision. I don't think any one person ought to make this decision. I think that the committee ought to include all stakeholders, that ought to have board members, that ought to have superintendent, any of his designated, ought to have a parent or two and a doctor. And that's all said. And look at the data, you ought to meet weekly to review it. Sit down, look at the data, and decide, next week, we're going to do this. If there's nothing changed, you know, you can review the data without me, if nothing's changed, say, okay, we'll skip this way and go to the next week. Something like that. And I think there's got to be a constant monitoring, and you've got to have some idea about what constitutes an emergency, what, when do we change colors and go, you know, if we're down accordingly. So, you know, to me, that's a big part of the plan. That's a big part of what needs to be done to round this out, make it a jam up plan.
And Dr. Bradley D I does provide some demographic data. Individuals ten and younger, four percent have tested positive, of all the individuals have tested positive. Ages eleven to twenty, eleven percent. So fifteen percent are younger than twenty. And that's statewide, that's not necessarily.
I think that helps the public understand why we make a decision. You know, if all they're doing is looking at the number and that used by, they say, what are those people thinking about, you know, doing this? When we can talk about the number of children, what percentage of the people in Aiken County who have the virus are children? You know, I think that's a much better indicator of why we're doing what we're doing than, or should be an indicator of why we're doing what we're doing, rather than the virus part. Assuming that, what, the medical community, the American Academy of Pediatrics is saying is correct. I mean, you really need to read that document if you have it, it's a good document. It's a little wishy-washy, it doesn't pin things down as much as I wish it did. I wish, when they say that children are not as susceptible as adults, what does that mean? I mean, it's, I mean, one less, or two less, or three less exposed. Don't get it, you understand what I'm saying?
No, I think that's a really good point. We can try to reach out to D I and see if we can get some kind of data. That's a good, I think, data point to make a decision, or to, you know, inform, make an informed decision.
I received a question from a parent, actually, it's two-part. One is, excuse me, one is, do all employees understand the confidentiality of our children that were sick? And I think they're just looking for some reassurance that that should not be a problem.
That would be part of our training, specifically when teachers and employees all come back, that's a part of our training, that was specifically hit that.
Good. So they will be, that will be addressed with employees. Secondly, a parent asked me, will Scholars Academy follow these phases, or will they follow USC Aiken's schedule, such to class sizes? That's, we don't need that part.
Well, so we've been working with Ms. Messick to determine what exactly will happen with Scholars Academy. We do see some differences from what the regular school is, because I think her first junior class will be taking all college classes, so we have to make some accountabilities for those. Specifically, we haven't nailed it down, but we do see some differences.
Finally, for me, I do want to say, this has not been an equalization. This has been an opportunity for parents through us and board members to ask questions, and you guys have done a great job of handling them and handling them professionally, and I personally want to thank you.
I just had a question for Mr. Holt here. Let me get it here. How about other employees, the other employees, like custodial staff, office staff, P P E, for those folks, I assume they will get the same type of P P E?
They will.
Okay. All right. Let's go to Mr. Crane, and just go down the line, and then Mr. Ness will be ready after Mr. Silas.
All right. And I'll start mine with echoing Mr. Smith's comments. This has been very good. I feel like I put Mr. Lawrence under an acquisition. We did not have the questions I've been sending him from parents and stakeholders the last week, so I'm sure he's glad that we can, you know, take some heat off of him and put it on y'all. That's a joke. This is a parent question. How do we plan to manage for the G T and advanced classes, A P classes, things like that at the high school level with the cohort situation, if that's where we end up having to be? It's just some general concern about those being impacted negatively, and some of the schools already have some issue with class sizes and being able to, you know, actually have some of those advanced classes. So can we speak to that?
So we do, with the A P classes, so that work is going to be more rigorous. We have set some guidelines that we'll be able to share with you, and a complete document about all of the different protocols and things that we've talked about. Didn't have it ready for today, but, and we're still fine tuning it. Another work of the famous Dr. Gamble. But we do know that for those more challenging courses like A P dual enrollment, that kids will have possibly more work outside of class than, you know, that one day a week if it's in Phase One that they're going. They're going to have higher expectations just because of the rigor of the coursework that they're taking. It's college-level work. So where we might set a guideline of, you know, no more than one hour or two hours as the limit of a course on the days that kids are off from school, those courses, we would expect that kids would be working more, if that makes sense. As far as G T and advanced courses, so the teachers will still follow the curriculum and pacing that's set forth in our curriculum. And with the smaller groups, sometimes it might be easier to differentiate in those earlier phases for kids who are ready to move on and kids who need a little more assistance. So we still want courses that are advanced to be challenging, and our teachers do a great job of differentiating for kids who are ready for moving on. So, you know, we'll still have those advanced courses. The curriculum helps guide in what standards they should cover and how to go deeper, and the resources that they use will still be the same, and it'll just be more challenging in how they use them. So, did that answer your question?
I think so. If I have a follow-up, I will email.
No, you will, sir.
And I do look forward to getting that document, and I'm assuming that will be something we can share in some form, maybe, with folks. My last question, it's not really my last question, but since we've limited my last question. For, if there's a group of folks that choose to do the virtual learning, or in the cases of the first three phases where we're not in school every day, are we going to be handling food service, A, for the virtual kids at all, and B, on the days when we're not in school? Are we going to be, is that going to look kind of like the last quarter? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Good evening. So it won't quite look the same. This, whenever we faced the closure march, we were able to provide any school-aged student a meal. Of course, we had the bus delivery, we had the options for graphic. Our thoughts are now for students that maybe in the red phase, for instance, in red in Phase One, if we were in that phase, sending home four days' worth of meals as they leave, if they choose to participate. Now, in schools that are non-C E P, where students don't eat free charge necessarily, we still would have full pay, reduced prices that we would have to deal with, but still working through some of the details there, but at some point throughout the day, getting account of how many students do wish to participate, and having those ready as they leave for the day is what we're looking at. Again, we aren't on the same system as before. We don't have the same, the same record keeping. We have to have the names and what child participates versus before. I know that you're familiar with it. We had really a tally sheet that we marked off without having to trade names. We weren't able to go that route. As far as virtually, we wouldn't have the ability now that we see like we did before, because we're going to be transporting students back home at the end of the day, or to school. So we wouldn't have the availability of the bus drivers or aides who are helping in classrooms who helped prep and helped transport that. So I think it would be, really, at least now, based on what we envision just for those students that are attending school, and then having us set up where they could take meals home with them.
If a virtual learner or parent wanted to pick up meals, is that something we could look at? I haven't asked that specific question, but it just popped in my head.
That's something we could certainly study. I, yes.
Thank you.
Can I say something? I'm sorry, I had to say something today.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand, Sir and Jason, those students who choose virtual wanting to, you know, come in or take in lunch, but I'm like Mr. Trexler, a ton of those that I see in this room, that is going to be a lot of work, and we're going to have to really try to figure out how that's done if everybody's back to work. Because the only way we were able to, you know, make a million meals and give a million meals is because everybody was available to pitch in and give those meals. So I'm just going to say personally, I want parents to realize, can you please stop me and Keith, if I'm just speaking out of turn, but that's going to be a reach. I'm just, seriously, because that was a lot of work, and that was only because we were able to have the help of teachers, aides, I mean, everybody, everybody.
Can I add one more thing? So in that example, I guess I was speaking more about an upper-grade student. The concern that we discussed too was, what about your 4K kindergarten, first grade student having to carry home multiple days' worth of meals? But it should only be one additional day that they're carrying one day's worth, because they would be in school for three days. So if they were attending Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, as they left on Tuesday, they would carry home Wednesday's meals. As they left on Thursday, they would carry Friday's meals. So that's one point that we did discuss as well.
First of all, I just want to echo what everybody else has said. I want to thank all of you that have been on the task force for the thought and the planning and the thoroughness of everything that you've come up with. I think, again, that this is a plan that is going to help people feel more comfortable, because it is an uncertain time. People do have a lot of questions and rightly concerned, and so I think this is addressing all those things. And like Dr. Bradley said, it also has flexibility, so I think that most people will like that, and I appreciate that. I just have one question, because somebody had addressed this question to me. I think you touched on it earlier, but just for clarity for some that might be watching the live stream that may have missed it, if somebody chooses to enroll their kids in virtual school at the beginning of the year, then you had the option at the end of the first semester to enroll in vacuum school, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anne Blythe first.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Silas, and then we'll get to Mr. Ness, when I think Mr. Smith had one question, one last.
Can you talk about substitutes? And if a teacher, if we can't find a substitute for a class, what would happen to those students, you know, with regard to maintaining the distancing, et cetera?
Well, typically, in a school, we have that problem often, that we can't find a substitute. And so a lot of times in the middle, in high school level, maybe a teacher on their planning period may have those kids doing their planning that day. So that's one option. I mean, we hope to find substitutes, but that's one option for when that happens. We may have to have an aide or the media, the media aide come in and watch them, or the media specialist. So we have some people who are not directly responsible for kids every single day that could possibly cover some of those classes if need be.
So we'll kind of wing it, I mean?
Well, I would say, on site, like, if there's no subs to be had, is that what you're talking about, like, we can't get a sub?
Yeah, maybe especially for elementary school. Where I understand maybe, you know, that load was split between teachers of that same grade level. So, but you can't, then, because of the numbers, you can't just send six more to this class and five over here, so.
There is a possibility you can send one or two.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's always a possibility also. But typically, we don't wing it. Like, principals have, in their, at their locations, they have a plan for if a sub doesn't show up, because we've experienced that. So we always want to have a plan for if a sub doesn't show up.
That was probably not a fair.
Yeah, wing it, nah.
But, and then I think you did touch on this, but someone did text me a question, maybe wasn't clear, just expand briefly or quickly, on the level of interaction with virtual, and particularly- and particularly at the, at the, in the elementary grade, maybe for each, you know? Is it a two-way street? Is it just one-way?
So there, there will be conferencing. So, um, like teachers did with Zoom meetings, there would be opportunities for the child to get on with the teacher and other students that are participating in virtual during the day. Um, so we mentioned, um, in one of the slides about making sure we have a parent or an adult committed, um, to helping assist with, um, virtual. Should a family commit to that? Um, particularly at the elementary level, ensuring that a child gets on at the appropriate time to interact with his or her teacher. So, um, you know, there will be activities that the child can do, not with the teacher, but there will be guided lessons from the teacher every day. So there might be a first-grade teacher who's working with a group of first-grade students who are doing virtual. So, um, again, all, we're, we're still fine tuning all of that because we don't know our numbers. So, um, you know, if we only have five first-grade students and five second-grade students, we might have an early childhood teacher who's teaching both first and second-grade students. It, it just depends. Um, but there will be time for interaction every day with that teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Good, she'll lean, then we'll get to Mr. Ness when Ms. Jackson had a question.
Just have one question to touch on what you were talking about with the virtual. I know in the more rural areas, it's been a concern that we've brought up, you know, that some people don't have really good internet access. Can you talk just a little bit more about the steps being put in place for those people?
Right. So we know that the state is making this part of their mission statewide with some of their CARES money um, to, you know, work on that, but it'll take a couple of years. Um, in the meantime, we're hoping to have hotspots that we can give families to check out. Um, but, uh, without internet, internet access, it's gonna be, you know, difficult for them to do virtual. Uh, but we'll do anything that we can to help, you know, with, with that situation. And hotspots would be one of the, the answers that we'd have right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Will you, uh, Mr. Nessel, point?
Sure.
While you're doing that, Ms. Jackson, why don't you go ahead?
King. Yeah, uh, Ms. Jackson did ask me about, um, career in technology education. Mr. Postel, could you, uh, I thought, I know you thought you had gotten to the end of the meeting. Nobody was gonna put you on the spot. Sorry. Um, but, but certainly there are some, some circumstances with, with career in technology education that don't necessarily lend themselves to, to virtual learning, and so.
Yes, sir. What the plan is, is for Mr. Lot, once the, w- once the details are worked out with this, is to get, develop his plan of how we're gonna serve our students, um, through career in technology education. A lot of it is hands-on and it can't be done virtually. You can't do welding, um, culinary, things like that virtually. Um, so he's gonna work on that with his team. Actually, already started their plan adapting to our phases, um, to bring that in. So definitely committed to meeting their, their needs as well. Thank you. It was good to take the mask off. Thank you very much.
All right, now we'll get to Mr. Nessel.
Okay, Mr. Nessel, go ahead with your question, please.
Sure. Um, first, first of all, I, I just wanted to say, uh, like other folks did, thanks for all the work that went into this. Um, and two of the questions that I had is, going back to the temperature checks, if we say that we were gonna do those multiple times a day or once a day? And when do we do this? And just to be honest, I'm just, um, I'm just concerned about folks that, you know, gonna go sixty foot tall and all instead of the school.
Yes, sir. We haven't definitively, um, set a number, but we definitely will start in the morning with the checks. So, um, we're taking into consideration what the local medical professionals advised, and that was to do it at least twice.
Okay. Um, and then the, is it maybe something that if we don't know, that we, uh, you probably know for next week? My, my question is, what is the procedure or the protocol gonna be when we have a positive test in a school? And for instance, whether that's a student or a teacher? And do we think that'll affect just that classroom or the whole school or?
So, Mr. Nessel, it will depend a little bit. Um, I mentioned earlier about the, um, the guidelines that, that we receive from the CDC. And, um, and, and of course, our school nurses will be trained on this and our, our administrators as well. Uh, looking at, first of all, you know, you're helping parents to, to see the, how critical it is that if a child is sick, that the child stays home. But, uh, if we do discover a child is sick at school, then we will, you know, have a, an area that's designated as an isolation area and then contact parents and as quickly as possible, uh, get the student transported out of the school. Now, then we do, uh, contact tracing. We try to determine who that student's been in contact with. Uh, again, uh, the CDC doesn't necessarily recommend quarantining everybody. Uh, so, uh, we would look at whatever the, the current guidance is. It might be that we, uh, that, that the recommendation is that we monitor, uh, for symptoms going further. Especially if, if we can determine that all of the social distancing and mask wearing and, and, uh, and other monitoring and other, other layers of, um, of protection have, have been followed. If all of those things have been followed, then, you know, you can, I don't think you ever feel completely comfortable. But you feel a little more comfortable that, um, that if the students have, have maintained the distance that they were supposed to maintain and, and they haven't been in close contact for an extended period of time with that student who became ill, uh, then I think the recommendation would probably be from the CDC and from D A that we monitor symptoms of the other students in that classroom. Don't know that for sure, but, but based on what I have read, that seems like, um, what their recommendation would be. Now, of course, that could change.
Okay. Um, thank you. And I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have another question, but I just, just wanna say one more thing. Um, and I just, besides thanking everybody in the room, I just think it's a shame, you know, this, this past spring, we learned just how valuable education in the schools, different teachers are. Um, and now we see what we're gonna have to go through to start schools again and kind of the extra load that people are gonna have to pick up. And the shame part of it is, I, I think it's just a shame that in the midst of all that, 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 you know, folks are not gonna get their step increase this year. Um, the thing is frozen from the state. And I know I'm president's acquired, perhaps. Um, but I just, that's all I wanted to say. If we see how valuable teachers are in the education system is, we're gonna ask them to take on more. And we can't even do a step increase. I appreciate the time and all the answers to the questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Nessel. Mr. Smith, one last thing and then you're done.
Yeah. I'm glad to see you're at three, exactly to nine. I just got another question from a, from a parent. Um, go back. Are you, are we, let me see how to say this without coming off negative because the parent didn't mean it that way. Um, they said they're having a, this parent says they're having a hard time reading the chart. And they were asking, will it be put on the website? And I, I'm assuming it will.
I think that's dependent on the board, so I'll defer to the chair for that.
Well, it, it's my suggestion that they need to see what's being considered. And I suggest that to you, keep that in mind, upkeep.
Yes, sir. Everything we've discussed here tonight is public. So, so we, I mean, we'll make everything that, that, that you have discussed and, and, and of course, the, uh, uh, the recording of, of the live stream is, is going to also be available. So, um, so the public certainly has access to everything you've talked about, including the, uh, presentation.
Mr. Lawrence?
I'd further would like to have that sent to me, um, this portion. And, well, I wouldn't mind having the whole thing. That way, if someone adds, I can maybe copy and send to them if they're having trouble somewhere.
I, I just ask that we always remind folks that this is not a final product. So when we, when we share it and when we talk about it, you know, the, um, uh, the board will hopefully, I'm gonna ask the board next Tuesday to make a, make a final decision. But, uh, until then, uh, this is, this is a draft and this is for discussion.
Is it possible to get the nurse protocols also sent? Because that's, the parents keep asking, well, what if a child is sick? So that way I can have it and.
Yeah, we'll share everything that we have available.
Next week.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And, oh, I do wanna say, and I did mention this when we, when, when I was answering the question about, um, what happens if a child gets sick. And I wanna thank the board because, um, uh, you have provided in the budget for us to have a full-time nurse at, uh, at all of our schools. So thank you very much for that. And, and that will definitely help us in this, this circumstance.
Mr. Lawrence, once the meeting is over, right now, we have it to where people can view the meeting, uh, better with the larger screen. After the meeting's over with, we'll reduce that back down. And then the presentation, as well as the agenda that was already there, will be posted on that same spot. So it'll be on the front page of the district website.
So as soon as possible, we'll have it available to the public.
Do we go to two slides a page for us, the old guys who have tired eyes?
Okay, well, uh, let's wrap up here. Um, so for the folks at home, uh, this information will be available on the website. Give, you know, have some patience, maybe check in the morning. Uh, and if you have comments, uh, send them to the respective board member or Mr. Lawrence. I'm sure there's many more questions out there. And I'll, I'll just say, I'm blown away by the amount of effort that y'all put into this in a relatively short period of time because you figure school just ended officially like a month ago or so. So we were still trying to wrap up last year. And this seems like a pretty solid plan. I, I agree with Dr. Bradley. We need to have some kind of information to make an informed decision on where to start here. Um, so probably in the next week or so, we probably need to kinda think about that a little bit. Um, and we won't know all the details next week either. I mean, we're gonna have to just kinda keep going at this as we can, uh, up until August 16th at midnight or August 17th at eight in the morning. But I think, you know, hopefully this will relieve some of the anxiety that folks have that we do have a plan, we have, we're making progress, we're moving forward, we're not going backwards. So, and really sincerely, I think we all said it, put it from our hearts, we really appreciate all the hard work that you've all done with this. And, um, with that, I think I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn, thank you.
All right, well, all those in favor, raise your hand. And we'll see you next Tuesday. Uh, it was unanimous. I did count.